That is our signal. So, um, tonight, um, before I gavel, the regular meeting to order, I want to mention that the council met in a special meeting, uh, agenda at 5:30. And, uh, we then went into closed session to discuss, uh, real estate matters and, uh, heard the, um, uh, items that we needed to at that particular time. And so we are now out of that closed session and we are now meeting formally to, uh, begin our regularly scheduled, uh, April 19 meeting. So, uh, at this time, I'm gonna gavel that meeting to order and ask you all to come to order and thank you very much. Um, our first item of business is to ask our town clerk to call the roll if she will.
Mayor Marshburn?
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tim Vance?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vanger?
Here.
Okay. Thank you so much for that. Our next order of business is, um, is the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Singleton. If you're able to stand and can participate, we invite you to do so. And that'll be followed by our invocation.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seated. Recognize Mr. Singleton at this time.
Those who'd like to participate will have the invocation. Father, we thank you for this day and this opportunity to gather here and discuss important issues to our town and our community and our citizens. As such, you be with the members of this council, the members of our staff and the citizens here as we discuss these issues that are important to all of us. Father, we lift up those been sick, those who are battling terminal illnesses. Be with these folks, be with their families as they struggle to get by. We lift up the men and women of our military who are representing our country, protecting our country, and military installations and bases all over this world. As such, you be with these men and women and be with their families and help protect them. Guide us, Father, this evening. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Singleton. So, as most of you are aware, the first item that, uh, we attend to at our meetings is something called petitions and comments. And this is a portion of the meeting to receive comments from the public on items that are not, uh, on the regular agenda. So if you're here this evening and wanna, uh, make comments on a specific, uh, hearing topic, then that would be the proper time to do that. This is under petitions and comments for items not on the agenda. Ideally, you could sign up with the town clerk to speak prior to the start of the meeting, and some of you may have done that, and I'll check with her in that regard. The council is interested in hearing your petitions and concerns, but it may not and probably will not take action or deliberate on subject matters brought up during the petitions and comments segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate town officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Um, it's my general understanding that there are some persons here who wish to speak during the, um, during this particular segment. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have, uh, persons that have notified you?
We have Ms. Yarborough, Ms. McDowell, and Mr. McGinnis.
Okay. Um, and let me just mention, uh, as I recognize at least one of these persons, there may be more. If, if you are here, uh, with others to speak to, uh, the same topic, uh, we want to hear from you, but we don't want repetitive comments. So if you're with a group and you have designated someone to sort of be your spokesperson, that would be the ideal way to, to, uh, have your concerns heard. Uh, but at this point, since I believe I heard the name of Ms. Yarborough, I will recognize Ms. Mary Yarborough at this time who, uh, desires to speak to the council. And if you will, um, do your best to hold your comments to three to five minutes, ideally.
Maybe a minute, maybe a minute.
Thank you.
Uh, the other portion of my, uh, statement in terms of wanting to speak was not read. I said only if some of the presentation tonight was made that concerned Jones Sausage Road. And since I haven't heard anything so far, then I won't say too much. But one of the things I'd like to say is, is there anyone who could tell me what phase of this project are we in coming up Jones Sausage Road? Phase one, phase two, phase three? Can anyone answer that question?
I'm gonna recognize Assistant Town Manager, John Hodges, uh, who you know, and, uh, we've had, uh, some meetings with him and with you. But, uh, John, go ahead.
Uh, Ms. Yarborough and everyone else, we have been working on designs for the Jones Sausage Road widening that would start where the Amazon project ends. Um, we are, uh, finalizing those 30% designs now, and we're hopeful to be able to schedule a public meeting in May. And so as soon, as soon as we have that date, you'll be the first to know. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I didn't actually note the names, uh, so, uh, I'll recognize, uh, who, who, who might be next, Ms. Clerk. Okay. Does that person wish to speak at this time?
Then it would be Mr. McGinnis.
I'm sorry?
She's like, me, I'm fine. I'll just talk.
Okay. All right. So we're clear on petitions and comments right now. Uh, if you didn't sign up, uh, we sometimes are flexible and, uh, we'll hear from you anyway if you're here for another reason. But, uh, okay, hearing none. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, we will, uh, we will proceed with our regular agenda. And the first item of business, council, as you well know, is the adoption of the agenda. You have it before you. Unless there any changes to be made, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Socket. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Singleton, Mr. Matthews. Uh, no further discussion. All in favor of adopting the agenda. Would you vote aye? Aye. If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. All right. Um, I have no listings on my agenda for presentations. Um, are there any that you're aware of, Ms. Clerk? Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
Do you speak about the zoning? Is that coming up later?
Yes, sir. There will be, uh, some hearings coming up pretty quickly as we move along. Yeah. You're here to speak to one of the zoning issues, I believe you said, sir?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll get to you at that time. Um, okay, uh, council, the next item of business is consent agenda. I believe there are three items on there that you, uh, have looked at. Um, if you're prepared to do so, we'll, uh, entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
Send it.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Behring, dear Mr. Vance. All right, council, a motion properly made in second. If you're in favor of approving the consent agenda, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay. All right. Now, we're, uh, we're going into, um, section of public hearings. Public hearings are what the term implies. We'll be hearing some presentation from town staff and others. Uh, and in these hearings, there's an opportunity for those of you in the public to, uh, to speak. Again, the admonition I made a little early is if there are several of you here speaking on the same topic and you can designate a spokesperson, that will probably facilitate the hearing itself. Um, but the first, uh, public hearing we have, uh, tonight is a conditional zoning map CZ 2113. Uh, and I believe our presenter is Mr. Bowie. So, uh, I'll recognize you at this time, sir, for your presentation. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I will be presenting CZ 21-13, 709 Clifford Road, conditional zoning amendment. The applicant is Shujat Ali on behalf of SASA Development. The owner is Teresa D. Coleman. The property is located at 1709 Clifford Road. The tract size is 5.16 acres. And this is a tier one conditional zoning request from our residential 40 to single-family residential conditional R9C254. List of uses restricted and architectural comments have been proffered. Here's the aerial side view of the location. Street view of the location. Adjacent zoning and land use. To the north is residential R9 Clifford Grove subdivision. To the south of the site is residential R20, which is vacant. To the east is residential R9 Clifford Grove subdivision. And to the west is residential R9 Clifford Grove subdivision. Zoning history, there is quite an extensive amount of rezoning cases that have been heard over the years in this area. Existing zoning summary. Single-family residential R40, single-family lots of at least 40,000 square feet. Growth maximum density is approximately 1.08 units per acre. Some examples include single-family detached, residential cluster, and single-family residential subdivision, and especially uses such institutional, public, and other compatible uses that are designed so as not to detract from healthful, quiet, residential living. The site contains one single-family home. Proposed conditions, use category, specific use R9C254, household living, single-family detached, residential cluster, single-family detached subdivision, and associated accessory uses. Any form of group living protected by state or federal statute for use in single-family dwellings shall be permitted according to the specific standards of the Garner Unified Development Ordinance. There were some conditions that have been added that we received, um, after we did the staff report. So I'm just gonna, um, go through those highlighted right now. Number two, all single-family homes shall have at least a two-car, two-car garage. Garage doors shall have, shall have carriage door, hardware, and windows. Number three, accent light fixtures a minimum of eight inches wide and/or eight inches tall shall be required above all garage doors. Number five, no vinyl siding shall be allowed. Number eight, front elevations with a cantilever projection shall include cosmetic brackets or shelf supports directly beneath it. Number 10, a minimum of 100 square feet is required as part of each dwelling unit for an outdoor, outdoor deck, patio, or screen porch. Number 11, a projected covered front porch, a minimum of 20 square feet is required as, as part of all dwelling units. And number 12, all dwelling units shall have at least one trim window per habitable floor on each side elevation. Window trim shall be minimum of one by four board. Overview of the request, again, is to rezonate single-family R40 to single-family residential conditional R9C254. Um, being a tier one requested, there's no site plan at this time. Zoning conditions limit the range of permissible uses to single-family detached, residential cluster, single-family detached subdivision, and associated, uh, uses. And again, there's, um, one single-family home on the site. Community information, this site is located near the intersection of New Bethel Church Road and Clifford Road, and surrounded on three sides by single-family residential. Neighborhoods in the area include Clifford Grove, Clifford Glen, and Harper's Landing. Staff identified 53 properties within a notification radius, and, um, noticing, um, the, the public, the, the public hearing by the applicant was held on January 5th, 2022, at 5:00 PM at Garner Senior Center, Senior, Senior Center with six people in attendance. Consistency of requests, PC meeting, when considering a rezoning request, the planning commission is required by state statute to make a written recommendation regarding the consistency of the zoning proposal with the town's current comprehensive plan and other applicable adopted plans. These plans include the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, 2010, 2018 Garner Transportation Plan, and the Parks, Recreation, Greenways, and Cultural Resources Master Plan. Reasonableness, in addition to approving a statement regarding plan consistency upon the advice of the planning commission, the town council must also approve a states, a statement of reasonableness when making their decision. Sources of reasonableness may include other sections of the 2018 Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, providing guidance on keeping the town's character, living spaces, working places, recreation opportunities, and transportation. Other adopted plans and policies providing guidance on parks, greenways, cultural resources, and more may serve as sources as well. Recommendations, staff recommends that once the town council has heard comments, concerns, and questions from the general public, that conditional rezoning request CZ 2113 be referred to the planning commission for their review and recommendation regarding the request consistency. Are there any questions for me at this time? And the applicant is here to speak on behalf of the application. If you would like to speak with him.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Uh, let me see if council has any questions for you or comments. And, uh, I'll start, uh, this time to my right with, uh, Mr. Vance, if he has anything.
No questions.
Okay. I'll come to Mr. Dellinger.
Question on density. What's the maximum density and/or, I guess the applicant may know, how many the units they plan to put on the property?
The applicant can answer that question. Our, our staff estimate, um, if you take gross acreage and you subtract that about 30% for open space and ride some ways, we estimate between 14 to 17 lots could be developed on the site. That's at a density of around 2.7 to 3, uh, units an acre.
Okay. Um, Ms. Behring, anything? Ms. Singleton?
So to clarify, you gave us an updated sheet, but the one in our agenda package says no more than 14 dwelling units. So has that been taken off? I don't, unless I missed it on here, and it may be. I don't see there it says no more than 14 on here. But it does state that in our agenda package.
It was taken off.
It was taken off?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also based off this, um, this will have masonry finished, uh, no vinyl siding, and masonry finished product will be the siding on all sides of the, of the homes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Matthews, anything?
Is this the lot where the little yellow house is on that curfew?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, council, you satisfied at this point? Uh, so, Mr. Bowie, do you understand the, um, applicant desires to also speak to this issue?
He's here. If you would like to ask him some questions. Uh, he did not indicate that he wanted to, but he's here.
All right. Um, council, would you like to hear from the applicant? I suppose you would, maybe. I don't know. Feel free to, to make any comments you want to at this time.
And good evening, Mayor Marshburn, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Vance, and members of the town council. My name is Neil Gosh. I'm an attorney at the Morningstar Law Group at 700 West Main Street in Durham. Tonight, I'm representing the applicant for this rezoning SASA Development, uh, Mr. Shujat Ali, uh, who's the owner of SASA, uh, is here with me tonight as well. Uh, so let me first start by thanking Mr. Bowie for his presentation of the project. Uh, I should also thank the town's planning staff, which has given us plenty of guidance on this project. We very much appreciate it. Uh, in fact, we have offered a revised set of zoning conditions based on their feedback, which I believe you are, have already been provided. Um, for the most part, the conditions generally are the same, but we have worded some of them slightly differently to convey the same concepts. I do, well, I don't want to bore you to death, so I'm just gonna go over just the significant changes we implemented based on the feedback from staff. Um, we did get rid of the zoning condition, which limits the total number of lots to 14, not because we intend because we intend to build more than that, but because the total number of lots ultimately is a function of the dimensional standards of the underlying zoning districts. Staff recommended removing this condition, I think probably because it restates a fact of the UDO requirements, but ultimately, we do plan, what we've drawn up is 14 lots here. Previously, our zoning condition suggested that garage doors would have either carriage style hardware or windows, but we now are requiring both on all of our garage doors. And we also have expressly prohibited vinyl siding and have increased the required outdoor component of each house from 64 square feet to 100 square feet. I think that covers the big changes. Other than that, I would say that this is a nice infill project. This is a small site at just over five acres. We have a conscientious developer here who's not looking to cram as many houses as possible on this site. He's a custom builder. He's looking to provide some quality housing. At 14 lots, this is right at about 2.7 dwelling units per acre, which is on the low side of the medium-density residential category that is designated on the comprehensive plan. Given the existing development in the surrounding area, the project fits right in with the pattern of land use here. Another really great aspect of this project is that pretty much 90% of the parcel abuts right-of-way or HOA-owned open space. I doubt there are many five-acre infill parcels in the town that only abut three existing homes. So I think this project is doing a lot of good without doing a lot of harm. In fact, most of the site already is cleared. It's an old farm homestead, and I think "old" is an operative word here. The staff report mentions that the site has been studied previously by the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO. That study was done, actually, I think in the '80s, and even at that time, SHIPO found that it could not designate the site because it had been remodeled, both interior and exterior, so extensively that the architecture was not indicative of any particular period. SHIPO did let us know that it still will be involved in the review for development approvals for this site, particularly to the extent that there are any federal permits needed. But that having been said, we do not actually expect to need any federal permits because we do not intend to impact riparian areas on this site. So again, this is a small, basic infill site for a project which is consistent with the surrounding properties and also is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Seems to make perfect sense, and we're eager to get your feedback tonight if you have any, and I thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Just let us see if we have any questions.
Sure.
If Matthew's anything.
Yes, I'm, uh, Goesch, right, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, yes, Mr. Goesch. Yeah, we have a copy of the letter from the state from Natural and Cultural Resources. It can be confirmed as it's not a landmark or historic places and so forth and so on. Well, I was going to say, there's a small portion of this house which was built around 1790, but it's been remodeled. There's some stuff all around it. There's not too much original of it left.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I will just, I'll bring this up at a later date, not now. I just wanted to confirm all that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bearinger, anything for the attorney? Mr. Dellinger, anything? Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay. And I don't believe I have a question, so I guess you can be excused for now anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Joe, thank you. Anything else from the applicant at this time? If not, I'm going to recognize any other persons who came to speak to this particular issue, either pro or con. Are there any persons who wish to speak on this particular agenda item? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Anything else from the town? Are we finished? Okay. Unless there's anything else, I think we're in order to close a public hearing and to have council consider this, refer to the planning commission, is it okay? I'm going to close a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the Conditional zoning request CZ-21813 be referred to the planning commission for review and recommendation regarding plan consistency.
Second.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Vance and Mr. Matthews. Motion is properly before you, council, to refer this to the planning commission. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please vote aye.
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 And there's no opposition, so that is the next action that will take place, and then this will come back before the council at a later date. Thank you very much for your presentation, your time. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll now move to the next public hearing, CTA ZTA 2201 Garner Forward Unified Development Ordinance, and we will hear from our planning director, Mr. Jeff Treisenberg, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's been a request to actually, because these are interrelated, to hold the two public hearings together, the one on the UDO text amendments and the one on the proposed zoning map.
Okay, so we'll take this up when we come to the other one then, I suppose. Is that right?
How about joint public hearing? So rather than two separate public hearings, they'll be discussed together.
Okay, all right. But are we ready to do that now? Okay, I recognize you, sir.
We do have a pretty full room upstairs, and I know we didn't clear out a whole lot of seats for, so for the benefit of the folks upstairs, we're just going to ask them to go ahead and listen to the presentation. I know a lot of folks did not come with any preset questions, but then we'll take our time with, at your discretion, to let people come down and queue up to ask questions if they still have them after the presentation. And so we do have staff upstairs that will kind of help coordinate that process.
Good, that was going to be my next question. We do have someone up there that can help facilitate that. Is that right, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, those of you upstairs who can hear us, I'm sure you all can, we'll certainly try to get to you as well. Thank you. Mr. Treisenberg.
All right, well, good evening, members of council, everybody out in the audience. Thank you for being here this evening. This is the first part of the formal public review process for this UDO rewrite that we've been working on for the last couple of years. With me tonight is Allison Evans from Stewart, who is with the consulting group that has been helping us with this project. She is going to provide just a brief overview of some things for folks who may not be as familiar with the process. I will just preface, there is the webpage where we have everything that's happened pretty much over the last couple of years with meetings of the steering committee, recordings of meetings, the joint sessions with the planning commission and the town council. So please do check that out if you are curious about how we got to this point. And so with that, once Allison gives kind of the general background, I will dive into a very high-level summary of the changes to the text, as well as the new zoning districts that go with it. And then Allison will kind of wrap up at the very end as well. So without further ado, I'll invite Allison up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treisenberg, and welcome to you.
Good evening, everyone. I see some familiar faces. Allison Evans from Stewart. I'm very excited to not end this process, but start the final conversations towards bringing this UDO into action in Garner. So not, as Jeff said, a more in-detail summary of what we've been through is on the project website, but tonight I just want to go through some project status and schedule, the engagement that's been done, and then after Jeff is done reviewing what we're presenting, we will be going into next steps. So this project team has, of course, been working under the eye of town leadership and the planning department and many conversations with Jeff and his team. We have also been meeting frequently with the steering committee, who have been so generous with their time, and incorporating a lot of technical advisory from town staff, you know, people like the engineering department. Our Stewart team represents a variety of backgrounds and expertise, all in development-related specialties. You know, the community planning team has been the lead on this, but we've also received some support from our civil engineers, our landscape architects. And part of the project team that's not mentioned here is, of course, the public, who we have been touching base with throughout the project. One main way this is done is, you know, through the role of the comprehensive plan in the UDO project. It really is a best practice to, after the comprehensive plan is done, to then go update your UDO. Because while the comprehensive plan is visionary and conceptual and flashy, the UDO is really those nuts and bolts of how these ideas get on the ground for future development in Garner. So you can see here, we, you know, opened this plan at the beginning of the project, collected those ideas and the visions that was documented in the plan, and this is a list of just a few of the ideas that led our development of the standards you'll see in this UDO. So as far as article status, this was a two-part process. All of the articles have been through 160D updates, and that means that they have been brought into compliance with state statutes. This was a new requirement in the past few years from the state, so these were a few standard things, just best practices and state dictated changes. And now we are getting into the Garner Forward Update, which is where we really bring that unique tailoring of the UDO and its ordinance and its requirements to Garner. A good way to think about the division of these articles is we have our administrative articles, 1, 2, 3, 9, and 10, and those are really the process and procedure of this document. It is our review bodies, it is our review procedures, it is our enforcement, a little bit more of how things get done. And then we have our regulatory articles, things like zoning, use regulations, signs, lighting. Those are more of the physical development-related standards that you will see on the ground. So those were the parts where, after we did that state update, we really dove in with the steering committee and with the public feedback and with the guidance from the comprehensive plan to develop those standards. So yeah, so again, you can see phase one, it touched all articles, but that was primarily compliance. And then phase two was this final Garner Forward Update, which was really the meat where we got to dig in deep and break it apart and analyze how this is going to shape Garner while it's enacted. You know, of course, public engagement was part of this process. You know, we had five town council planning commission joint work sessions. We had three public workshops, which although they were held with COVID restrictions, they were held virtually. We actually think this helped more people get engaged because it allowed them to view the meetings at home on their own schedule. We had 15 steering committee meetings. That's about two weeks of evening meetings. People were very generous with their time reviewing all of these updates that we are making. At the beginning of the project, you can see pictured, we had 12 focus group interviews from various stakeholders around town, people who were experts and invested in the town and how its development ordinances affect their daily life and what we see around us. And again, to shout out that steering committee, it was a great group, enthusiastic group of citizens and professionals who are engaged with the town. We made sure we represented different viewpoints and perspectives. We had some great debate. We met regularly throughout the process, and not everyone always agreed with each other, which really led to a great exchange of ideas and debates that ultimately led to a better product. They also were great at reviewing the articles as they were developed. This hefty agenda packet we have tonight was broken down more and digestible. When you look at this list of steering committee meetings, all 15 of them, you can see how the project developed. We started with the kickoff and the regulatory articles. We then went into zoning matters before we dove into those articles, more development-related, those physical articles. You can see how topics like landscaping and parking and environmental standards, those popped up a couple times because we would, you know, craft a draft for them, bring it to the steering committee, and then take their suggestions and comments and questions back, and then gave them a second version of the product that they could then comment on. So after all of these meetings, and again, we thank all these people for volunteering their time, we ultimately have this draft ordinance that will become the guiding document for Garner. And Jeff is going to walk you through what we were working on.
Thank you, Allison. Again, just to give people a little bit of background, our Unified Development Ordinance has not had a major rework to it in close to three decades. It's a very, has become a good document in that time, but a cumbersome one. Things have been duplicated, things contradict each other over time, and it was long overdue for a cleanup. I don't want anyone to think that we've thrown out the baby with the bathwater. While it is a rewrite, much of the stuff that was identified as good and necessary was retained, and where we needed to improve things, that's where we spent the focus of our time. So lots of streamlining focus, and honestly, a lot of it was also part of the previous 160D state mandated updates as well. But I will walk you through each article, and it's just kind of its general purpose and whether or not some of the highlights of what has or has not changed. Article one is the establishment and administration. This is pretty much the legalese of the document. It sets up the governing authority or acknowledges the governing authority to have zoning and subdivision regulations, and it also provides a description of the zoning district conversion process, which is something that I'll get into in the second part. But for the most part, this is largely unchanged from the previous version. Article two deals with nonconformities. So if folks have a development, if their house exists on an old lot and it doesn't meet today's standards, we call that a nonconformity. It means it's allowed to continue as is, but when folks do come for anything new to be done to their property, then we have to look at whether or not what they're asking can be made conforming, or do we allow it to continue to be nonconforming? So the focus here was really just to provide some clarifications to the existing ordinance. Some of the language, again, here was largely contradictory or overlapping. It does maintain a relaxation of some regulations of what people need to do to try to bring their property into conformity. It used to be that when you had a change of use, which was most often in a non-residential setting, if somebody owned a small business and had a small business piece of property and wanted to expand their business significantly, it used to be that you had to bring everything up to code. Now, we've taken a much more nuanced approach, and it depends on how much you're going to be improving your property as to what parts need to be brought up. We'd rather, we decided, I think as a committee, we kind of all agreed that we'd prefer to focus on having properties in useful operation, as opposed to potentially having properties sit there dormant, because nobody wants to take on the task of upgrading everything. Article three is the review bodies. That describes the roles and responsibilities of you all as the council, the planning commission, board of adjustment, my staff and other town staff, and our technical review committee. Again, this is not something that needed a lot of attention, so again, is largely unchanged. In terms of article four, these are the review procedures. So when someone wants to do something in town, this lays out the process that you have to go through, what application you need to file, what the approval process is, who you need to come talk to, and who's going to give you that final approval. For the most part, this was the chapter that was changed the most due to state mandated changes. But since that time, we have introduced some new mixed-use districts. And so we had something called planned districts before. We had planned residential development was the one that we used most often. Since we have introduced these new mixed-use districts, we are proposing that the planned districts go away. I know that's going to be foreign to most of the folks probably, but for y'all, council, you understand the complexities that those projects had to go through. Hopefully, this will be less complex and easier for everybody to understand going forward. We're also looking at, we've also proposed to expand the public hearing notice requirements for individual projects. Currently, we notify folks within 300 feet, which is still above the state mandate of 100 feet, but we are going to propose to expand it to 1,000 feet, which is about a quarter-mile walking distance of folks who are within walking distance of a project. That's kind of where we decided we would propose to make that cutoff as being the most impacted by a potential rezoning or development. And we will also be notifying owners and tenants. Currently, it's just owners, which is the state requirement. We also looked at traffic impact studies. We had a definitive threshold there. We have now added some additional objective criteria for when traffic impact studies will be triggered apart from those base thresholds of will be triggered apart from those base thresholds of a thousand trips per day or a hundred in the peak hour. So if there's significant, things like significant congestion or documented crash histories and things like that, we can require a T I A for those projects in those areas. Our zoning districts. So this describes our, you know, the town's project, proposed zoning scheme. Again, we've had a pretty consistent zoning scheme for the last three decades, but it has grown and expanded over time as little changes in districts have been added. This will consolidate, the proposal is to consolidate the corridor overlays into a single. In many cases, some of the corridor objectives have already been achieved. After three decades, we've accomplished most of what some of those were originally set out to do. So we've kind of, we've raised the bar, though, and we use the timber drive overlay as kind of our standard of what we want to try to achieve. So a lot of those requirements that we have today for timber drive now will also apply to seventy, four oh one, and Garner Road. We also have introduced some districts that may be assigned to mixed transit corridors. So again, these are those mixed-use districts in higher intensity, but they are only to be used at specific locations. They're not currently mapped anywhere, but they can be if we have the right kind of development that comes in and requests it. I did skip over probably the most important one here, I'm sorry. Converts residential districts to density control while maintaining key historical lot design standards. So this by far affects probably the majority of folks here in the audience and the majority of our citizens. The, again, the objective here throughout the whole process is not to upzone or downzone anybody, it's just that we have this existing list over here, we have a new proposed list over here, and we're trying to equate from the old list to the new list. We're not looking to change you to something completely different, one way or the other. So if you do notice that there has been an error in the draft map, we have had a few of those brought to our attention already. We're going to be tracking those as we go through the public review process and resetting those so that it's as equal as it can be. We're not looking to raise anybody's taxes through this process, because if we did adjust the zoning, if you were zoned residential and all of a sudden we zoned you neighborhood commercial, that's going to change the value of your property. So that's why for this process, we're looking to keep you equal. The tax department will not look at your property differently. You'll be zoned residential before, you'll be zoned residential after. Everything should stay the same. Similarly, while we moved to this density control, it was recognized that there are some key standards about existing subdivisions that have been developed over the years in Garner. And so we made a conscious decision as a committee to keep those standards. So people's lot widths are not changing dramatically. It's not going to be a situation where suddenly your neighbor can subdivide their lot and create two out of one unless they happen to have an abnormally large lot for your subdivision. Admittedly, then, it could be possible, but for the vast majority of folks, if you have a standard-sized lot for your subdivision, that's how it will stay. And we're glad to continue to take calls from folks. We've been fielding these calls for the last week and a half. We will continue to do that and offer that and walk you through your specific neighborhood, if you would like, or your specific property. We also introduced very specific standards for properties that are accessed from a street versus those that are accessed from an alleyway. We've had a lot of interest in new developments to have product that incorporates alleys. We've kind of done that flying by the seat of our pants to a degree in our collective experience as staff with these in other jurisdictions and other places. So we now are using this as an opportunity to introduce specific standards that kind of codify what we've been trying to do and practice for the last few years when those projects come to town. We've also introduced some standards for smaller house-scale multifamily. We did talk a lot about, you know, housing options, what we can do, how far we should go, what we should try to encourage, what we should not encourage. What we did, one of the things that we discovered is we did not have really good standards for smaller things. So when we do have a smaller-scale multifamily proposal for somebody who wants to do just a three or four unit in a district where it might be appropriate, we will now have standards that emphasize the single-family kind of scale and character for that. Article six houses our infamous table of permitted uses. That's the table where you go and you look at your use in your zoning districts, and is it permitted? Is it not permitted? Is it permitted with standards? Or do I have to get a special use permit? For the most part, this was just cleaned up, but we did make some changes. Special use permits used to be aplenty is probably the best way to put it. And special use permits are where you have to have a hearing in front of the council. We as staff are not the deciders as to whether that project is approved or not. That is uses where the final decision rests with the council. When we look to move that from a staff approval to a council approval, it's because there's subjective things that we want to have considered. My role as a planning director and my staff is not to try to decide what's good or what's bad. I can clearly, you know, determine if somebody's met a minimum lot width requirement. Are their lots wide enough? Are they large enough? Is the building short enough? Things that are objective. But when we have uses that get into that subjective realm, you know, who is it that ultimately determines, and I'll use an extreme case here, but who is it ultimately that determines where the next landfill is going to go? There's some things that are objective about that, but there's a lot of subjective stuff. That's not, that's not for me or my staff to decide. That's something we need to debate as a community and in front of the council, and ultimately, that decision then rests with the council. So we did reduce the number of uses because there were a lot that just didn't need to be held to that standard. You know, if somebody wanted to construct a community center as part of their new neighborhood, I mean, a community center is a public space. It's an amenity. You know, so those are things that we determined that we believe can be addressed objectively and not held to that higher subjective standard. We also streamlined a lot of the use regulations. It used to be that we were flipping back and forth between chapters to try to get at not only the definition of what somebody wanted to do versus trying to find the list of examples that the ordinance provided, as well as the additional standards if you were going to pursue that use. Now it's all collected, you find your use, it's all right there. So that's very helpful to us, and I think that will be helpful to those in the small business community in particular, when they're looking to do something. And then it carries that use list consistently throughout the rest of the U D O. In the existing U D O, we had separate lists for parking and landscaping. So if somebody wanted to do an ice cream shop, I might, I might see it listed as an ice cream shop in one area, it might be listed as general retail in another, it might be listed as walk-up concessions in the third. And so there was a lot of reinterpretation that's had to happen on our side, on the staff's side, to determine what rules even applied to some developments going forward. So thanks to Stuart, we now have a consistent list all throughout. I will spend a little bit of time here on accessory dwelling units because this was one of the ones that was discussed pretty heavily with the committee, and I expect maybe of interest to folks here as well. Again, going back to the whole discussion about housing and what can we do to try to encourage some other types of housing, but how far do we go to encourage them in new versus redevelopment? So we did, we do propose to introduce specific regulations for accessory dwelling units and where they may be considered. So while they may show up in the table of permitted uses, and it may look like it's more of a general thing, there's actually other standards that apply that really keep it from being a general item. For example, you have to have a larger-than-average lot, and there's still the overall density control. So if your subdivision was built at approximately one house for every two acres, or your lot is about point four to point five acres, you're not going to be able to add an accessory dwelling unit to your lot, because you're going to need to have actually closer to point eight acres. So again, we're not looking to promote these everywhere, but where somebody does have some extra space physically to work with, then this proposal would entertain if the owner wishes to consider that. Again, there's going to be other architectural controls, overall size requirements, you can't add extra driveways. The focus is still on keeping it functioning primarily like a single-family lot. Article seven deals with enforcement. Again, largely unchanged, most of this is laid out in state law as to what we can and cannot do, but we were able to clear up some confusion over some parts of it through this rewrite. But this describes the penalties and how we go about sending letters to folks, letting them know that they are in violation and that the issue needs to be addressed. Article eight deals with new subdivisions and what the street open space and utility requirements are going to be for those subdivisions. There was a lot of stuff in the current ordinance that really was engineering-level detail that didn't need to be in there. So we were, again, able to use this process to separate that stuff out. That has now been incorporated into a draft engineer's manual, which will be handled by our town engineering department. That deals with the very specifics of what the road looks like, what kind of speed limits it's built to, you know, what the details of the sidewalk thickness and all of that kind of stuff. We also revised our street classification system to match up better with communities around us and with the larger regional model. So that should help us, you know, in some ways with our road planning. It does, and then in terms of open space, one of the things that we heard is that we had a sizable open space requirement, but in many cases, it didn't have to really be usable open space. There was a lot of just conservation areas, which is not bad, but we felt that we could do more to promote some passive and active recreational opportunities, rather than just relying on the developer to propose something. So we do now have a limit on the amount of tree preservation that can count towards open space. So that will now ensure that each subdivision does bring a recreational component to the table. And it will also have to be not just passive, as in trails and sitting areas, but active recreation, things that you can actually do, whether it's a playground, a tennis court, or something like that. So I think I covered the next one, one with that, that we introduced then the requirement for that active recreation space. We also introduced a minimum connectivity index for developments. This does not get to, for folks that have heard us talk about connection of existing stubs, this does not get to that level of specificity, other than to say that there is a minimum threshold of connectivity that we do need to maintain within the community to take some pressure off of the main roads. And then we also included, we worked with City of Raleigh, who is our utility provider, to put in some much-needed clarification about what utility approvals are needed as part of a development process. Some of that depends on how close you are to existing utilities, as to whether or not you get public water sewer service, or whether you're going to do community well, individual well, and septic service. Article ten, two more to go after this. Lighting and landscaping. We use this as an opportunity to incorporate our standards and recommendations for LED fixtures. LED is pretty much all the lighting you see nowadays. Nobody's doing high-pressure sodium, which was that old orange light that my dad loved so much and worked on with the utility company back home in the day. I still remember the mercury halide, which used to be white, and I just remember thinking it was so odd when we went to orange lighting. Things didn't look the same, and now it's probably just as odd going back to this white light. But we do have recommendations in there to keep it from being too bright, because it's very easy to get very intense with LED because it's focused, and to make sure, but the advantage is that it's, because it is very directional and focused, it helps us control the amount of light spillage onto adjacent properties. So we have incorporated some standards that address that, that will be easier to hopefully help enforce that. So if folks do have spotlights and floodlights on their property, hopefully, we can encourage them to keep them focused better in that respect. We better distinguish between accent lighting versus lighting that has to be regulated. So if lighting's real low level, don't really need to do much to enforce or to review that. We're really concerned about the general site lighting. It also simplified our landscaping ordinance. The landscape architects are thanking us left and right because the landscaping ordinance was extremely complex. It was very effective, but very complex because it had so many overlapping layers. We've now found a way, we believe, to divide up a site into discrete areas so that you really only have to focus on one part of a site at a time, and once you've done that, you can move on to the next. So hopefully, hopefully, that will still work like we tested it on a couple, and we believe it will. We also have improved clarification on street tree easements and the maintenance responsibility. That largely deals with the HOAs playing a role in street trees that are put in when developments are first built. And then we've also, with a nod to trying to encourage more tree preservation, when it came to the buffer discussion, we have decided to propose widening the buffers, because that is one of the few places where we can accomplish some tree preservation, but the screening requirements will be reduced. There's not always a need to provide screening between uses, they're not always that incompatible. But right now, every buffer requires a screen. And when I say it requires a screen, you basically have to have a hedge of Leland Cypress, or a hedge of Hollies, or something that's very difficult to see through. And it's not that folks still won't be planting those, it just won't be a solid hedge. There'll be a greater distance, it'll give the vegetation some room to breathe, and it'll allow us to do some more things that, for landscape architects, to incorporate things that are more, I guess, exciting to see. Not such a focus just on greenery, but they'll be able to incorporate some things that more easily that flower, that get fall color and things like that. Article eleven is our environmental and floodplain section. Again, this is largely dictated by state environmental rules, so there's not a whole lot of changes here. It was primarily editing. It does clarify the floodplain variance process because we have had some issues with that about pre-existing lots that were about pre-existing lots that were lots of record before these rules were initially adopted. So we did get that addressed. And then again, tree preservation requirements were maintained. We did do a special amendment several months ago that increased the level of tree canopy required, and that has been carried forward as well. Article 12, signage. Here, Garner's been pretty restrictive on digital displays. We didn't want to open Pandora's box for digital signage, but we did loosen them up slightly. We gave people a little bit more area to work with, but still, they can't be animated, they can't be changing constantly, they can't be distracting people. But it does allow for a little more modern approach to the changeable copy signs at the Hardee's where you see them using the magnets to change out the letters. They'll now have the option to do that on an electronic board if they want to, and again, that's where the LED lighting levels come into play because those signs can be very bright. We also aligned our categories with recent Supreme, well, not so recent anymore, but Supreme Court case law. We also have, and because of that, we're not allowed to regulate signage based on what the sign says. So if you have to read it to interpret what kind of sign it is in your ordinance, we're not allowed to do that anymore. We can only differentiate between signs based, basically on their physical structure and So some of that trickles down to the little signs that people in the past have been allowed to put in their yard for various reasons. That may include political signs, real estate-for-sale signs, yard sale signs, garage sale signs. You have to read each of those to know what they are, and we can't do that. So, we have, we have worked in and proposed an allowance for folks to have a sign in their yard. Of course, there's, HOAs may have their own rules about this, so that may or may not, you know, apply in your particular case. But in this case, we are allowing, proposing to allow up to a three-square-foot sign, which is basically an 18 by 24. And we also have introduced very clear, I think, and objective maintenance standards so that we can tell when a sign is no longer fresh and in good, and in good appearance. So when something gets worn out, we can ask folks to remove it or replace it. But that is one of those things that we have to make a call. Are we going to allow them at all? And if so, how much? The other option is really to, to just do a blanket restriction, but that comes with its own issues as well. So ultimately, that's where we've landed for now on that. Article 13 is our definitions. No major changes there, but this will mostly be seen in terms of functionality when you're reading through the ordinance now, and there's a term that's defined, you'll be able to click on it and it'll take you directly to that definition so you can be very clear about what the ordinance is talking about. So that concludes the overarching part of what the text amendment is about. So I'll conclude here with what the map is about. As I noted before, we've rewritten the ordinance, so there's a whole new set of districts. It's compressed, it's easier to manage, and hopefully easier to enforce going forward. And here's kind of the approach to the transition process that we've taken. I will note one change that we are proposing going forward. This is focused on the residential districts. If you see your residential district on the left, you'll see the proposed new district on the right. Again, we're trying to achieve the most equitable even transition that we can. The R-15 district was a little bit challenging because it could really go either way, but the new districts focus on the gross acreage and a proposed development. So it includes that street right-of-way area, and the more we've looked at it, the R-15 actually does calculate closer to an R-2. So we will be proposing that the R-15 actually become R-2. So that's two units per acre, and for anybody who does live in an R-15 neighborhood, more than likely, your lot is not exactly 15,000 square feet. It's probably a little bit bigger, and by the time you add in the area for the street that's in front of your house, you're getting close to half an acre per house. So we are recommending again that R-15 will go to R-2. That then does kick in a larger requirement if somebody wants to think about doing one of those accessory dwelling units. That acreage is higher, the width is wider, and again, it's more appropriate, we feel, for R-15. On the non-residential side, it was a little more case-by-case, but in general, you see the flow from the old districts to the new. Where we had the most case-by-case was in the existing office institutional and this district we called service business, which is really another name for heavy commercial. So depending on the actual use, we weren't looking to try to make a lot of non-conformities. So depending on the use, kind of depended on which district you ended up in. So again, here is the, you know, the draft map, so this is the big map that we have. Again, we've tried to provide that with that sliding map on the website, but we do have printouts of this as well in the office, and we can send you snippets and give you close-ups. Just send us an email or call us on the phone, we'll be glad to do that. And so I did just want to highlight a few things that have already been brought up to our attention during this last week and a half. As we noted, the R-15 will now be rerouted to R-2. We had a case that was in the middle of consideration at the time that this draft was initially being wrapped up, and so for those who are familiar with this site next to Garner Magnet High School, the existing zoning still is office and institutional conditional. The draft map was picking up a case that was in review and currently reflected a multifamily zone proposal, but that will now be changed to a neighborhood commercial conditional district proposal, which is more in keeping with the O-N-I that exists today. And then we have had a couple of cases that have just recently worked their way through to approval. So we have this one on Wilmington Road behind Hunter's Mark. The current zoning now is multifamily conditional. The draft was for an industrial zone, so the recommended will now be transferred to, again, multifamily conditional in keeping with that decision. And similarly, we have this project down near McCullar's Crossroads on Catty Road, again, a recent zoning decision that has, where the draft map needs to be updated to reflect that. So we will continue as staff to track all comments that we're receiving that need to have follow-up, whether it's on the text of the ordinance or on the map itself. We will continue to track those and respond to those, and by the time this works its way back to the council, we'll have a laundry list of issues that have been raised and recommendations ultimately that are made. I'll let Allison just touch base here on next steps, but again, this is just the first part of that formal public review process. We do have a tentative timeline, but that timeline is ultimately subject to change. We will take as much time as we need to at the planning commission level to work through everything and make sure that everybody's comments have been addressed in one way with a recommendation one way or the other, and then it will come back to council for any final considerations and potential adoption. So Allison, if you want to just go back over some next steps.
So, that next stage of review that Jeff was mentioning, how we foresee that going is after tonight, we are intending for the document to be referred to Planning Commission for review. We foresee two Planning Commission review sessions for that, April 26 and May 9, based on how those go and the volume of response received. That, you know, that could be expanded. You know, this is all tentative, and we foresee a council adoption hearing about a month after our last Planning Commission review. So with that, I will open the floor.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, was there anything else?
I think we're ready to go ahead and entertain questions, and again, we'll be tracking these, and I may not have a, may not have a response on the spot tonight, but we, but we will track and make sure that we get a response back on everything.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You covered a lot of ground there in short order, and I want to give council an opportunity to weigh in, and obviously, this is a public hearing, so we will give others the same Lot of information to cover. Obviously, it's a long time in the making. I think you said over 10 years, I believe it was, since we've, or maybe more than that. But at any rate.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, yeah, okay, wow. Ms. Baringer, I'll start with you to see if you have any questions or observations you'd like to make of Allison or Mr. Treesenberg.
The question is, I just wanted to say that I had been on that steering committee, and it was indeed a lot of work, well-organized and well-thought-out.
Mr. Dalgier.
No comment, other than I served on the committee as well, and I'm glad we're to this point to get public feedback and input. There are a lot of, there was a lot of debate, and now it's time for your input as we get to the final draft. Thank you all for showing up.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Vance.
First of all, I would say that to the committee and to everyone who has been involved with this process, your hard work is appreciated. Thirty years is a long time coming, a lot of things change, and a lot of things remain the same, and again, thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Singleton.
Let's hear what the people have to say.
Just appreciate all the hard work and effort. It has been a long time coming, as Mr. Vance said, and we're glad it's at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you. And let's remind our folks upstairs, if there are folks here who want to comment on this, this is now an opportunity for members of the public, this is a public hearing. If you have comments or observations or maybe questions at this time, we'll try to recognize several of you. Again, we'll ask you to keep your comments as concise as possible, but are there other, are there several of you here who want to comment on this particular item? Okay?
I just have a quick question.
Could you, could you come to the podium and just identify yourself by name and address? Thank you.
My name's Todd Beatty. My family owns a commercial property on Garner Road, and there's a discrepancy, so the paper here, my current, currently is zoned, my business is zoned as a service business, and the map shows it's going to be changed to neighborhood commercial, but this, this paper here says, the way I understand it, it says it's going to be changed to commercial mixed-use. So which one is correct?
I would comment on, well, I think it'd be fair to say that on detailed, particular questions, he might can give you a quick answer tonight, but it'd probably be best to follow up on that and get back in contact a little bit later to queue in on that specific item you're talking about.
Okay.
Do you have your PIN number on your letter, or do you know what it was by chance?
I've got the address, but I can follow up with you online.
Yeah, just give me a call or send me an email and we'll get to the.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you. Okay, is anyone else? Okay, yes, sir. Just identify yourself if you will.
I live in the Greenbrier subdivision, and my lot size is 3.8 acres. You're telling me that they can't put a grandmother's place in the back of that, correct?
At how much?
3.8 acres. You said it has to be extra, so does that take the house out of the equation?
So at that, the way it's drafted currently, at 3.8 acres, you would be allowed if you, if you can meet the design criteria.
Like, can put a rental property behind my house?
But there, you, you, let me remember how it's structured. There is a, there is a ownership requirement that the owner has to live in the primary structure, and then it's limited to certain size, and you cannot add a separate driveway.
Well, that's the next question that comes up. No separate driveway means that the people I rent the house to are going to have to park on the street, so we're talking about more congestion in the neighborhood, and that's your solution. That's why I'm here today. The proposal I saw up on the board said extra, and I figured, well, my house is extra, so Greenbrier's safe from people setting up bread and breakfast or whatever they want to set up.
So a bed and breakfast would be considered a different category. This would be for permanent, long-term living situations, not short-term. And I can go back and walk you through that specific example and make sure that I'm pulling all of the proposed requirements to give you a more complete picture.
So would you have to also set up separate utilities? You're going to have to add utilities if you add another house in the back. So you have to add it to your existing house, or you're going to have to set up a separate
I think that would ultimately be up to the individual owner, how they would want to handle that, and then if there's any applicable Raleigh requirements related to that. But again, I'll walk you through that whole. Are there any other questions, concerns related to that?
No, that's my main concern, and that's, I hadn't heard it addressed at all during this whole conversation. I did come up and talk to the planning board, they told me, one of your people out there said, you know, it was a mother-in-law. And I said, "Mother-in-law?" Okay, so I asked him, "What happens when my mother-in-law dies?" I said, "What do we do with the property then?" He says, "Oh, no, it has nothing to do with your mother-in-law." And I said, "I can see that now, it's just, it's the terminology that we're using to get it passed through."
No, it's just a general term that folks have used because that's where the proposal kind of originated from, was folks who wanted to have a space to have their in-laws come and retire.
I understand what people want. People want to put a thing in the back, especially if you come from an out-of-state and you buy some property, it's getting bought up all over Greenbrier, and they're out-of-state and they're, you know, they can have their son live in there for, till the permit goes through, and then they're going to have two rentals, what used to be of a neighborhood. It's going to change the whole outlook of Greenbrier.
So again, we put in that owners, the owner living there requirement is one of those things, because we have talked about that within, within the committee, that all those, those very issues were brought up, and we've tried to craft something that will, will limit folks from being able to do that.
I propose we have a vote on it with all the people in Garner, and let's have a, let's figure it out and not leave it up to some commission. That's, that's my personal opinion, because I think it's invasive on where I live and I've set up to live for the rest of my life. I mean, I don't plan at 70 to move. Now, if I was 50 and had the house, then I could move, but I've invested in a garden and this is my house, my home, and you're changing my home into a house. And I find it, it's what it is. If that's what the people of Garner want, that's fine. If everybody in this room wants to put a rental property behind their house, that's fine, but for me, it's not why I moved to Garner. I moved to Garner, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. We can't litigate all of the individual issues here tonight, but you certainly heard the strong work of the committee, and I'm sure Mr. Treesenberg would be happy to speak to you further on your individual circumstance, but a lot of work has gone into this, as you may know, and certainly it was, there was widespread participation in putting this together, so it's almost inevitable that, you know, when you do something like this, there will be some nuances and some things that not everybody will agree with, but the intent is to provide something that is reasonable for our citizens and works best for most of our people, all of our people, ideally. But thank you for being here tonight, anyway. Okay, is there any other person? Okay, yes?
How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
Hello, Mr. Seaver.
Town Council. My name's Steve Ward. I got two left.
I got two letters. So, one is for my business property over at 922 U.S. Highway 70 West and you guys probably remember that I was in here some time ago, had questions about the proposed development or the development. And then also I own property at 104 Resident, Residential. My question is, at 104 Taptin Court, sorry, I didn't finish my statement there, 104 Taptin Court and that's Garner. My, my question is, I have property that's, for lack of a better term, grandfathered and, you know, and I have garages and have driveways and so forth and my question is, is there going to be any, any kind of problem with existing or changes to existing property? So there's retroprocity involved there?
So the, the grandfathering is just something that is, is by default from ordinance to ordinance as it, as it changes and amendments are made. So you would not lose that ability to continue any operations as they are. It's only when you look to do something additional that we go back and take a look at.
Well, I know you'd mentioned that earlier about the changes are going to be a little easier and that you were going to, it was amended as to make minor changes. So, and, and I'm looking to make some minor changes in the future, so I'm going to be discussing that with you, Jeff. Thank, thank you. And I guess one other question was the buffers, you, you mentioned the buffers, is that going to be changed on residential buffers as well?
Oops, sorry. So yes, there, currently there's buffers required between any, pretty much any like, like use or different use and that's not going to change. What will change is the width. Everybody's buffers will be getting a little bit or in some cases, maybe a little more significant.
But there'll be no, no change to existing ones that are?
Correct. Again, again, whatever exists today will be allowed to continue to, to be the situation. If you do an expansion over a certain amount of square feet in relation to what you have today, that buffer might kick in.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Someone else? I'll recognize the gentleman in the very back and then I'll come back here. If you will state your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. R.W. Reagan, 216 Pecan Harvest Drive. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I have a question about the amendments or the proposed drafts for the residential outdoor lighting. I was so happy that you mentioned it in your presentation, but I just would like to know specifically, what do you plan to address in terms of outdoor lighting? The reason I ask is I live adjacent to a lot where the homeowners there see fit to have their floodlights on all night and this faces my bedroom window and so I can't for the life of me understand why they need to have their floodlights on all night. They reserve the right to light up their yard, but when it comes to lighting up my yard and my house, my bedroom window in particular, I have an issue. So I'm just here to emphatically request that you please, please include something, codify something where this sort of thing does not occur all over the town of Garner. So.
Yeah, good. Good, good question, comment. It's, I'll admit, it's one that we struggle with, particularly on the enforcement side because it is quite often an after-hours occurring thing. And we can put in, but we can put in light levels and things of that nature. So I'll go back and read through what we've got and see if we, if there's, if we need to try to tighten it up a little harder. At the very least, hopefully, we can get it to a point where we've got something on the books that we can at least be sending a letter to folks saying, "Hey, this, this is on the books, you need to be abiding by it." The other, the other approach is to actually get a light illumination reading device and go out there when it's occurring and take a reading at your property line.
Or me to do this.
Well, for, for us to do that. Which therein lies the, the challenge because except, except in the winter time, you know, that's going to be an after-hours kind of thing. But we.
Well, for me, I'm sorry to cut you. For me, during the winter, there is no foliage on the, on the trees.
Right.
So it's even more intense.
That's even more important, yeah, exactly.
And so there's a sewer easement cutting through my property, so I cannot put trees in the easement to build a screen. And if I could, it would take years to grow 30, 40 feet because their lights are mounted right underneath their gutters.
Yes, I will, I will read, read back through that, see if we can tighten it up some more if we need to versus what's already drafted and then get back to you on that.
While you're reading, would you please take note that this is what I look at all night long? I cannot pick up my house and pivot it and nor should I have to. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, I think the point was well made. Okay, I, I would remind you that while I know many of you maybe have individual circumstances that you believe these changes will refer to, it probably would be well to take that up on an individual basis, even though it could be done here, but this, I think, is, is more of a general overview of the general policies and procedures that he's talked about here and any suggestions you have for modification of those. Okay, I believe I saw another person who wanted to, was it this gentleman or this lady? Excuse me. Yes, ma'am. Is that Ms. Yarborough?
Mayor and to all of you who are representing us today, I don't want to be classified as the villain on Joan Sausage Road. And I'm not bringing up specific things for you all to address. What I'm asking is some help. I know that there's not a person sitting in here to say, "Wow, what's going on?" And I'm asking for some help in terms of the committees, the commissioners and his state, because we are involved with state, the town of Garner and the city of Raleigh, okay? Y'all didn't know all that, did you? Well, we are. And I'm simply saying, I'm fighting for some things, but I can't do it all by myself. And we've got to do something with Joan Sausage Road. All of this nice planning that's been done are being done now? I wonder, was this done before? All of this was said, "Let's have it." Do y'all understand what I'm saying? And I'm not lying. And you all know Joan Sausage Road is not in good shape right now and I don't know where it's going. I've been trying to have meetings and they have granted me meetings and I've said certain things, but I'm simply saying, I want some support from you all. I can't do it by myself. And all I want is to keep people from getting hurt, killed and whatever else you can think of. When I pull out of my driveway and here's a car coming from the school over there right in front of me, I'm scared to death. Did you hear me? You hear me? You would be too. So I'm simply staying and simply asking for a little bit of help. We're going to continue to try to work on that problem over there, Joan Sausage Road, but I can't do it by myself. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Yarborough. We'll meet with you further. Was there, yeah, okay. Comments are related to the subject at hand, I assume?
Right, yes, mine is for zoning.
If you would state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Tanya Quinn, resident at 121 Frendale Drive in Garner. And I received a handout notifying me of a rezoning of my property. So my question is really going from a residential into a rural agricultural and the concern is more or less what the rezoning would do to that property, not meaning that I want to build anything on there, but more so with the plans for parks and recreation and how that, if that were to impact me with the upcoming opportunities. I, I guess I'm just looking for a comment from maybe you, Jeff, how that works. Separately. Okay. Yes, sir. That's all my question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jordan Thorgren. I'm a resident in the Stony Creek subdivision, which is actually unincorporated Clayton. So just had a couple of questions on just some of the zoning that's happening right behind us. So for you, it's PIN numbers 1740165280, which is 7633 Rapp Quarry. And then the second one is 0 Rapp Quarry, which is 1740058673. So those butt directly up to my property and we've just had some concerns where we had to actually reach out to the engineering firms because we've actually been encroached on our property for a lot of those utility lines and things of that nature. So quite a few trees have been taken down in areas of our property, so just wanted to acknowledge that and suggest if we're rezoning that area, to potentially have a different company work on it or maybe a second opinion so that we don't use, lose our land. So, just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, I would remind members of the audience, we probably can deal better with individual questions of your individual properties, sort of one-on-one in a meeting, not as general as this, but right now, we're asking you to comment, if you have them specifically, on the presentation of the, of the rewrite of the UDO and the rezoning. Any, any other comments at this time? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Council. Council members and Mayor. My name is Denise Thomas and I'm a resident of Garner. My questions are not pertaining to my personal property, but I would like to know, will the setbacks increase with these, our residential zoning changes? Will the setbacks change at all?
Treesenberg answer that.
I think, in, in many cases, we tried to carry them forward. In, in a few cases, they may have gotten. Right, right. Let me, let me send you the direct comparison for each of those to look at because in some cases, they're, they're not exact, but in many cases, they're either the same or they may have changed by five feet here or there. Depending on district to district and I don't have that right on the top of my head.
So when the setbacks, did they increase?
So in, I want to say in one of the districts, we may have gone back to a 10-foot side, but in general, I think we've, for the most part, we've kept the six, six minimum 15 combined that's in the current ordinance today. And then usually most front setbacks are around 25, 20 to 25. But let me, let me, let me send you those direct citations so you can take a look at them.
So for the homeowners whose properties are being impacted by the setbacks, are those homeowners being notified?
So again, I'd have to go back and look and see which of those might be, but again, the goal was not to, was not to create non-conformities, so I think for by and large, things are, are the same. There, there might be for improvements, there might be an impact of a couple of feet here and there, but for the most part, they should be the same.
I also have a question concerning how the proposed residential zoning changes might affect the potential to have rezoned for commercial. Will that have any impact at all?
No, because again, everybody who's currently residential will stay residential. We're not proactively incorporating any changes into this process. So we still have our comprehensive plan that outlines the expected future uses and that would continue to be one of our guiding documents for proposals for rezonings going forward.
So during the, the town hall meeting, it was a couple of years ago when Sheets was applying for opening that new gas station at the corner of New Ran Road and 70. There were some drawings that were shared during the presentation and it showed the properties on, I know, New Ran Road and I think Carroll Drive area as future commercial retail. Has that changed?
So that, that's in the, that's in the comprehensive plan, so that, that has not changed. And again, for the, for the existing zoning, some of those parcels are zoned residential and some are commercial. There's a mix on that corner. That will, that will still be the case going forward. It won't be rezoned one way or the other.
Have you received any applications for any zoning, commercial zoning in that location of New Ran Road and Carroll Drive?
Have one that's in review? Okay. That was submitted in the last month or so and David can, we can send you that information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Someone else? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, I thought you were going to speak. Suppose not. There you go. All right. I'm not begging, I'm just, just observing, okay? All right. Anyone else? We want to be fair with, with you folks who came out tonight, a large crowd and I think our planning department's done a good job of presenting to you this, this, this body of work that has taken a long time and any number of you participated in it and I think it's, it's a good piece of work. It's going to be tweaked some along the way in your individual circumstance. If you have questions about that, if you'll contact planning, I'm sure they'll be happy to talk to you about that.
And please, if anybody does have questions, feel free to call the main line at 919-217-2249. We'll be, please leave a message if, if that line is busy, but our front desk person is kind of coordinating those calls. He'll get you to, to one of us for follow-up on any questions that you do have. We do want to make sure that everybody who has a concern leaves comfortable that it's at least being discussed and, and addressed further and we'll be glad to follow up with you.
Should I focus that number again? I think there may be a digit off in there.
Sure. Again, 919. 773. I said 217, didn't I?
Yeah.
I apologize. Long night, too many numbers. Yes, 919-773-4449. And just a point of clarification, the planning commission meeting is Monday, the 25th, not the 26th, but planning commission will be taking it up at, at least their next two meetings. And thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Just a quick reminder, don't call the mayor, he won't know the number. I'll have to refer you to someone else, but that's really true. Okay. Anyone else? I, I guess we have any folks who were upstairs, had the ability to come, okay, so they've all had a chance to participate?
Yes, yes. David, David went upstairs and notified, so I believe everybody's.
Okay, all right. Okay, Council, do you have anything else before I call for the question? We'll get a chance to, to obviously deal with this again if we do as suggested, that is refer this to the planning commission and it'll come back before, Council.
I do have one question. Now, the question raised by the gentleman in Greenbrier is interesting. You got a house and you can put a house behind it, the granny shack, the mother-in-law shack, whatever you want to call it. Person passes away, the owner. According to a news report, one in four houses in Wake County now is bought by out-of-state investors. Out-of-state investor buys it and there's somebody in the house in the back. What do you do? The person, the owner, does not live in the house. You've run utilities, you've got a house back there. What are we going to do? Think, better think that one out. Because one in four houses in Wake County is being bought by out-of-state investors and if that happened in, in this gentleman's case or anyone else? And if that happened in this gentleman's case, or anyone else, what are we going to do?
We'll go back and take that through.
Right.
Anything else from counsel?
Okay. To answer that question, the owner of the property has to live in one of the two units.
And the owner passes away. That's what I'm saying, and the out-of-state investor buys the property.
Then it may be possible that that use of an accessory dwelling unit cannot be used at that point.
Hey, but I don't, we need to have that in language. Needs to be in writing. I mean, you're raising this issue here, that you're defining that the owner has to live in one of the buildings, the owner passes away, someone from out of state buys it. You can kick somebody out of the house. I'm just saying. We need to take all this out.
And particularly if they buy it with the anticipation that they would have a rental unit behind it, and generating rental income from two units, not being aware of the provision, it's a complicating issue.
Mr. Attorney, when we call for a motion on this, do we need to vote on these two items separately, I suppose?
You can do a joint motion to refer both the UDO text amendments and the townwide rezoning to the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Okay. I don't think there's any further debate on that, but I'll hear if there's any. So, okay, you understand the motion, referred to the Planning Commission will come back to us. All in favor of the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? No, and there is none. Thank you all, if you were here for that matter. Obviously, if you desire to depart, if you would do so quietly, that'll be fine. We have some other business to take care of, and some of you are perhaps here for that. I'm not sure. Counsel, you want to move on or take a break?
I'll take a break.
I'll take a break.
I mean, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's only quarter to...
We will take a quick 10-minute recess and get to the other items on our agenda at this time. If you'll come back.
Okay, Counsel. We're going to call our meeting back to order and we will go to Agenda Item under New and Old Business. We have two items there. So for the first item, Mr. Banfor, is that going to be you? Maybe not.
We didn't prepare a follow-up formal presentation for this, but we did because nothing has -- well, things have changed, yes, but they were in the textual conditions that are in your packet, but the proposed site plan remains the same. But for the West Garner Road Town Home, the Buffalo Town Home proposal, the applicant did agree to the condition that the buildings, the units along West Garner Road would face Garner Road, and they are also committing to a minimum of what we call a 30-inch-high water table of stone veneer on all sides of the building. And so I'll invite the applicant to say anything that they would like to about those changes in the offerings, but otherwise, like I say, we did update the staff report accordingly, revised the proposed motion draft for you, should you decide to pursue that, given that we feel a few more things are probably ticked off or checked off on that back sheet. And if you do have any questions for us, we're happy to address them.
Thank you, Jeff, for sharing that. So who's here? There's Mr. Toby. Okay. We'd be happy to recognize you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of Council, Toby Coleman with 150 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh, here on behalf of the applicant. I just, we just put together a quick slide there that gives you sort of the summary of the changes made since the council meeting two weeks ago. There are two specific issues that were really requested and focused on, both in the staff report and from council, and those were that the circled units there face West Garner Road, and so that has been put into some language in the master plan. We've also added a design condition that was recommended by staff, providing a masonry water table about two and a half feet tall. Happy to answer any other questions, if you have any.
Okay, thank you, sir. Let me see if Counsel wants to ask questions. Bill, do you have anything? Mr. Matthews?
No, sir, not at this time.
I believe I've confirmed in an email with Mr. Trezenberg today that this will be an all, I have two different types of siding on the front. This will be an all masonry-type project siding and so forth, a hardy plank or masonry-type siding. Is that correct?
I'll let, it looks like Jason Meadows is a project engineer. I'll let him answer.
Jason Meadows, 8771 Cleveland Road, Clayton, North Carolina. The conditions do indicate that it's not a vinyl-sided product, so we do anticipate using a hardy cementitious siding.
So a hardy plank, some type of masonry base siding, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Berginger, anything? Mr. Dill?
Well, questions? Excuse me. I know what's sort of outstanding is the connectivity question, which I guess you all have foregone the need for us to come up with a standard and are willing to be flexible with regards to whatever that standard becomes, whether we want you to connect it or not. Is that correct?
Right. Yes.
So my other question, the differentiation between the condominium townhomes and the listed as townhomes in the southern part of the property, the pink, are those the lot lines of those properties? Like, is that what those are? Are those the full lot lines?
I think those are--
Those aren't footprints. Those are lot lines, right?
Yeah, I mean, so those are fee, those would be fee lots, so those would be lot lines. They're not, obviously, you'd sort of, obviously, these are, this is a master plan, so it's not specific to be recorded, but yes. And the only difference under the code, I think you know this already, but the reason that the ones in orange are called condos, in fact, I think the ones along West Garner Road will ultimately be, could be fee as well, because they're now going to be facing West Garner Road. And the difference under your code currently is that if you face a street, you can have a fee-in-lu townhome. If you are facing a private road, then it has to be a condo structure, right? So the colors have retained, you know, we didn't update the colors. That's partially because we made a last-minute change, and I was the one doing it, and I am not very handy with changing colors.
Couple different questions, and they are connected. The, this was drafted with the rationale of connecting those roads, because that's what you were told, you were told by staff that you would need to connect.
Yeah.
And so that determined the entrance road location on Garner Road, correct? I mean, it makes sense that it would go straight across.
It was one of the factors. It was not the only factor. One of the main other factors was that there was a desire to make sure that there was a left-hand turn southbound lane coming off of West Garner, so people going southbound on West Garner could turn onto this road. And in order to have sufficient space, we worked with DOT, in order to have sufficient space to have that left-hand turn lane and not conflict with, Jürgen Road is just north of where this picture is, or is just north of the top of this picture. And in order to not conflict with the northbound left-hand turn lane to Jürgen Road and that storage, the entrance needed to be put further south of the property. We, in fact, discussed with Mr. Trezenberg, he, we had various discussions with staff about potentially jogging the road and pushing the entrance further north. And ultimately, the issue was really, that issue of sort of storage was one of the main issues why we wanted to put it further to the south.
The other question is related to the townhomes, the rationale for having them sort of encircled on both sides by road.
It's an alley on the back, so the rationale is so that they can have alley service for the back, so you don't have garages along the frontage along that public street.
I'm just, I'm trying to be sensitive to, there, you know, multiple times the petitioners have come with support for preserving as much of the trees that are there, as their old growth. There's one here that's 100-plus on it, and then there was another handed out tonight from local neighbors, sort of, not in favor for lots of different reasons, but also wanting to preserve as much of those old-growth trees as possible. And so in looking at, it just seems, it seems a little redundant, where you could have one road, and then people could actually have a yard with trees at the back. But again, I'm not familiar with exactly what product you're trying to do. I think it seems a little strange in such a compact neighborhood to have a road go all the way around your property on both sides. Usually alley, you're doing alley so you can service houses on two sides, because it's more efficient. It's hard to see the efficiency of having an alley load with one side when you could just do a front load and custom maintain. I don't know if, does that make sense? The developer's over there, he's--
So we did have an initial conversation with transportation staff regarding a garage-entry-loaded product from what would be the Curtis extension, and that results in a back-out maneuver of a vehicle onto the Curtis extension, which is probably dissimilar, you know, not dissimilar from what the single families do on the other extension of Curtis. However, with some of those, some of the turning conflicts and the introduction of the Villa Vista Trace connection, which is required, the back-out maneuvers being in close proximity to that intersection could create issues with conflicts of existing vehicles on that section. So really, we see, we focused a lot last time we were here in front of you on the West Garner Road-facing units, you know, urban-style. So we really see that continuing around the corner onto Curtis as well, with, you know, front steps and front door that come down to that extension or that piece of roadway there. So I see a similar product as what you would expect to see on West Garner there.
If this design that's up here now were the one that we're finalized, and there's not sort of the quick cut-through to Curtis, which is what kind of originally was in the plan, then I would see backing into that would be problematic. If they were a roundabout here from Villa Vista, or it didn't connect at all, which is also another possibility, is that still problematic to have that front load?
I think just the unknown of what that is, we took the alley-loaded approach in order to feel confident and comfortable with the feedback that we got from transportation at the time.
Yeah, I'm just trying to be sensitive to people who, the community that has had expressed interest in trying to preserve as much. You've already provided a lot of buffer in this project, which I appreciate, I mean, a lot on the north side and even more on the south side that you didn't have to. And, you know, just depending on how that connectivity works, preserving even more and not impact, you know, having less surface area also decreases runoff and all that other stuff, too.
Does, correct.
So I'm not sure how we address that as a, nothing as onerous as a condition, perhaps, but at least as a consideration on finding a way to increase that southern buffer by eliminating that wraparound road. Just--
Yeah, I do, I mean, I think that, I think that in general, the width of the units and the, you know, front-facing garage doors to the public street is just a lesser aesthetically attractive, you know, product along that section. So, you know, that's something that we consider as well, is what does that street view look like and how do we serve it? You know, I understand the concerns, and I appreciate you mentioning the additional buffering, which we have, you know, continued to maintain, even though we've changed this plan quite a bit from where we started. So we've continued to try to maintain that, even while sacrificing density in order to maintain, so.
I guess it's, you know, Buffalo Grove is the one that comes to mind, because I drive by it most often, but there's a tendency to somehow make an assumption that people don't want trees in their backyard, so they just kind of cut them all down, and they're like, this is your wide-open yard. And part of me thinks some people actually wouldn't mind having it on their property and in their yard. They're, oh, there are trees in my backyard. If they want to clear them at some point, they can. I know that's a challenge for site prep and all that stuff, too, but we also just kind of appreciate people trying to be even more proactive around this stuff. And again, acknowledge what you've already done on the northern side as well, so.
We see several different products here. You know, if you look at the very north end, that's, that could be a product that, for example, could be sold to more family-oriented, you know, buyers, and then maybe a more urban setting, like we mentioned along West Garner Road, to someone who doesn't necessarily, you know, need a yard for a dog or children or anything. And then the central units there, they're, it looks a little bit, you know, crowded around the stormwater measure there, but there will be a sufficient, you know, pretty significant amount of green space there, centrally located around those units as well to be able to access. So a couple of different opportunities for different buyers in different situations, I think, is what this product, you know, ultimately--
If Mr. Vance has anything.
Yes, I just have a very minor point of clarification, that is in reference to the roads that are within the site plan. They're pretty clearly distinguishable, but if we look back at the, where the cul-de-sac is proposed, and from my understanding, that the cul-de-sac road is going to connect to Curtis Road, correct?
If council requires, is that correct?
Yeah, if council requires. If you can go to the next slide, David, or actually, the next slide. So I thought this might be useful. So there is a general, there's a note that we added, basically to address this issue, counsel. So after the public hearing, we heard a lot of concerns about the Curtis Drive in particular connection. And in fact, about both connections, we heard some concerns, but the focus in terms of cut-through and in terms of other things was really on Curtis. We took that out initially, and when we went to Planning Commission, we had it just completely out. And staff, staff was very concerned about that and said, we don't think this complies with the transportation plan. We were going to keep it out, but ultimately, one of the things that happened was, is that Counselor Dellinger raised the very good point that maybe the town needs a overall policy on this issue. And so in recognizing that and in recognizing the need to, you know, frankly, some business needs that, you know, as Counselor Dellinger says, you may or may not want to take consideration of, the need to get this rezoning moved forward from the applicant's point of view, what we've proposed is, the default is leave it out, but what the condition says is, if council enacts a policy that requires the connection, the connection will be provided. And so what we were, what our goal there was to essentially do what we think probably council is leaning towards doing, but we can't read minds, we can't tell the future, so we wanted to make sure that there is flexibility there. We think that addresses a lot of the concerns from some of the neighbors in Vandora West. You know, frankly, again, Villa Vista Trace, in terms of the road connections, what we've tried to do there is provide that traffic circle. We hope that that will help provide some calming measures. You know, frankly, it's, it's not as direct of a cut-through route up there. We appreciate that there are neighbor concerns. I think you all have heard this before, and so I apologize for repeating it, but essentially, what staff told us that they had determined was that where the Villa Vista Trace currently stubs out is longer than is permitted by the UDO. So something needed to be done to basically extend it or do something onto this property. And so given that, that's why we proposed that. We don't think, we don't expect that the residents in this neighborhood will go through the Weston Ridge neighborhood, because frankly, they have an access right there on West Garner, and we think there's probably be something that's utilized more by actually the neighbors in Weston Ridge, but, you know, that's, that's sort of, I know that's a long answer to your question, but hopefully that's helpful.
It was helpful. Just a clarification for those who may be looking at this and seeing those invisible lines there and wondering, what is that all about?
Yeah.
So now that point has been cleared?
Yeah. The default is, it won't be there unless council passes a policy.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I believe I got, did I get to you?
Just, I appreciate Mr. Vance asking that question. As a concern of mine was that stub out, and I think we've got that answered, and so we can go either way with it, and it's already stipulated. And we are facing the old Garner Road. That was another concern I had, and those two concerns have been taken care of. Actually, now we have two connection points on Villa Vista before, before they were done, so that's just to confirm. There's one there that goes to the alley behind the townhomes, and then one at the roundabout.
Yes, the Villa Vista is, it currently stubs out at the property line, so it's extended down to that traffic circle. And so it would, it would, the public road would be a sort of a right at that traffic circle if you're heading southbound, and then you could go through to the alleyway there. Yes.
Where you see some cut-through traffic in the neighborhood, because if someone's coming back, heading east on Garner Road in the afternoon, instead of having to wait to the light there at Andrews, you can go down Capital View, down the end, take a right, and that'll take you the same way, missing the stoplight. But anyway, that's just being familiar with the area.
Yeah, and I did, so Counsel Singleton, I did try to, I frankly spent some time trying to time that. It's, you know, it's a couple of minutes, depending on how you hit the light. It's about a five, it's a half-mile, based on my estimates, if you do that loop. Again, the thought process was, you know, we can't necessarily provide traffic calming, you know. Garner has a policy, as you all know, for neighborhood traffic calming that is separate from what we can do in a rezoning. The idea here with that traffic circle was, is that it would provide both distinction for the existing neighborhood, so you felt like you're going somewhere else, but also that it would create a sense, it would also, traffic circles tend to act as a traffic calming measure. You have to reduce speed, look where you're going, all that.
Other issue is that sometime in the afternoons, traffic will back up to Vandora Springs-Garner intersection, and it will go past that driveway, that entrance, so people are trying to get out and get left. They'll just have to work with the traffic. Anyway, that's just, is what it is. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. Did I cover all Council members' questions? Okay.
The conceptual drawing that's up there now, you have that stormwater management system on the east side over there. There are a lot of trees drawn in. Are, what's the, is that all going to be preserved or cleared, other than the stormwater obviously?
Yeah, that's a good question. If you could go one slide forward. So Counselor Dellinger, this is a bit of a comparison, but it gives you, answers some of this. So there's, if, on the master plan, it shows that there's 35-foot perimeter buffers along the entirety of the eastern property line under the current UDO. And again, I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head how the new UDO works with this, but under the current UDO, with those perimeter buffers, those have to be protected. Those are no-go zones. So 35 feet will be protected. In terms of additional trees, there will obviously need to be additional areas planted in terms of whether there'll be, what will be preserved beyond the 35 feet. That will be known once grading plans happen, and so that's the, that's where things are. Again, this, what this slide shows is, is that, you know, one of the things we heard from neighbors was a concern about trees, and we certainly appreciate that. One of the things that was, we've noted it, but Planning Commission has noted it as well, is that if you, if you did straight single-family homes, and I looked up at this and confirmed it myself again, there's no, there's nothing that says you can't just clear-cut the site, and the current UDO has a, if you're doing single-family homes next to single-family homes, there is a zero-protected perimeter buffer. So that's not true?
There's a buffer between residential, so.
There's a buffer, there's definitely a buffer, but at least, and again, I'm happy to be corrected on that. I don't, I'm not trying to, I don't want to--
There is a buffer. I guess, but there's a 35-foot perimeter buffer, but that doesn't cover the entirety of that triangle that you see on the outside.
Correct.
And so my other concern or question would be, what are the firm plans for that? Because of what I wouldn't want to see is if there's uncertainty around the Curtis Drive, which may not come in the near future, that's like, well, let's just clear it out, and if we have to build a road, we will, and if we don't, we'll just clear it anyway, just in case. So that's why I'm asking kind of explicitly, if the road was going to be there, they'd be cleared. And I guess, as a developer question, I'm going to ask a developer.
Sure.
He's the one that's going to develop it.
The area will, obviously, there will have to be some grading in that area, but I'll let Jason answer.
Well, I mean, I don't know, that's why I want to ask him. So the area that's sort of all east of Villa Vista, in that stormwater area, it's a heavily wooded area, and on the conceptual, this pretty drawing, all the trees are still there, but I've seen projects where the same thing happens, and then they just clear it all out, keep the buffer, and then, you know. So I'm curious what your plans are for that space, if Curtis Drive does not have to be connected through.
Yeah, I would say, then in general, we don't necessarily jump into the business of clearing when not necessary. It increases land costs, it increases additional erosion control and additional stormwater measures associated with that. So that, that being said, if the Curtis extension was indeed not required, there really wouldn't be any reason for us to clear that area out beyond that 35-foot buffer that's shown. So I understand your question. I don't know that we could commit to anything specific, but I would just state that if we don't need it from a grading standpoint or a connection standpoint, then we just would leave what--
Okay. Anything else there? Do you, anything down here? Okay, thank you both. Is there anyone here who wanted to speak to this particular issue? Yes, sir. If you would go to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn and members of the Town Council. My name is David Schmidt, and I live at 120 Villa Vista Trace in Garner. At this meeting, you will decide whether or not to allow rezoning of an area on West Garner Road. A developer wants to build 66 townhouses on this land. During the last council meeting, I presented the following points. 66 units is still many more than the maximum of 47 units that would be consistent with a Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. The developer did not address most of the concerns of the Planning Commission members. Three of the seven members voted not to forward the proposal to you. Nearby residents are concerned about increased traffic and the potential for 100 to 200 more cars, which will make traffic much heavier than it already is. There are only a fixed number of railway crossing points along Garner Road, and increased traffic will cause more congestion at those points. Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan is automatically amended whenever it becomes inconvenient. It is clearly not a document that Garner intends to follow, and so has no value. Members of my neighborhood and the surrounding community purchased their homes based on current zoning and have expressed concerns over this rezoning. A number of my neighbors have discussed moving. The claim made by the developer regarding median housing prices in Garner is at best debatable, and this claim was used to influence Planning Commission members. While the planning department is pressuring you to support the proposed development, as elected members of the Town Council, I ask you to act on behalf of those who elected you. Please see the submitted list of 21 signatures from my neighbors in both Weston Ridge and Vandora West, along with their comments in opposition to this development. I ask you, as elected members of council, to vote against the proposed zoning change. Thank you.
Make sure. And I would remind council members, I believe you have, or I passed around the--
connected through.
Yeah, I would say, then in general, we don't necessarily jump into the business of clearing when not necessary. It increases land costs, it increases additional erosion control and additional stormwater measures associated with that. So that, that being said, if the Curtis extension was indeed not required, there really wouldn't be any, any reason for us to clear that area out beyond that 35-foot buffer that's shown. So I understand your question. I don't know that we could commit anything specific, but I would just state that if we don't need it from a grading standpoint or a connection standpoint, then we just would leave what.
Anything else there? You, anything down here? Okay, thank, thank you both. Is there anyone here who wanted to speak to this particular issue? Yes, sir. If you would go to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Good evening, Mayor Marshburn and members of the town council. My name is David Schmidt, and I live at 120 Villa Vista Trace in Garner. At this meeting, you will decide whether or not to allow rezoning of an area on West Garner Road. A developer wants to build 66 townhouses on this land. During the last council meeting, I presented the following points. 66 units is still many more than the maximum of 47 units that would be consistent with a Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. The developer did not address most of the current concerns of the Planning Commission members. Three of the seven members voted not to forward the proposal to you. Nearby residents are concerned about increased traffic and the potential for 100 to 200 more cars, which will make traffic much heavier than it already is. There are only a fixed number of railway crossing points. Along Garner Road, an increased traffic will cause more congestion at those points. Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan is automatically amended whenever it becomes inconvenient. It is clearly not a document that Garner intends to follow, and so has no value. Members of my neighborhood and the surrounding community purchased their homes based on current zoning, and have expressed concerns over this rezoning. A number of my neighbors have discussed moving. The claim made by the developer regarding median housing prices in Garner is at best debatable, and this claim was used to influence Planning Commission members. While the planning department is pressuring you to support the proposed development, as elected members of the town council, I ask you to act on behalf of those who elected you. Please see the submitted list of 21 signatures from my neighbors in both Weston Ridge and Vandora West, along with their comments in opposition to this development. I ask you, as elected members of council, to vote against the proposed zoning change. Thank you.
Make sure. And I would remind council members, I believe you have, or I passed around the registry of those people that Mr. Schmidt referred to, who've signed it. Was there anyone else here who wished to speak to this matter? Hearing none. And also, council, I would remind you of the written comment from Josh Corbat in regards to the, to this issue as well, presenting information in opposition to this. So I just wanted to record, as having been delivered to council members. Okay. If there's no one else and nothing else from the town, is that right, Mr. Trezenberg?
Trezenberg or Mr. Bamford. On, this came in as a tier-two conditional, and so, I guess my question is, when the full site plan comes back, what are the full criteria for the review and approval at the staff level? Because it won't come back to us, correct?
Staff level approval, yeah.
So how will this, those connectivity decisions we've talked about weigh in, and the timing of that, with being only 66 units? It's technically not required to connect, have more than one connection anyway. So you could say, well, no Villa Vista connection, no Curtis. Well, how will you measure the final site plan for approval?
So we're, we're on track to be coming to you, hopefully, in May, probably the first half of May potentially, with that policy, to have that discussion. That will, we will conclude that long before they get to the point of achieving staff approval. Because that will, as much as I might have, have faith in, in engineers, you know, it takes at least two or three reviews to get through. And right now, the, the timing for that is stretched, because we're still short staff. So we would look for the policy matter to be solved first, before that approval would go through, so that we would know what we're, what we're enforcing and what we're not.
All right. Council, it's time to decide the matter, I believe, if you're ready. A motion would be in order to consider the Resolution 2022-5108, I believe. Pleasure.
I move that the town, the town council accept the Planning Commission's written statement regarding consistency of the zoning amendment request with the adopted land use plans detailed in section, that's four? Six?
Six.
Six. Six of the staff report and find the request inconsistent due to its inconsistency with the 2018 Garner Forward Plan. Yet, I also moved that the town council adopt ordinance number 2022-5108, approving rezoning of CZMP 2109 as requested. It's still reasonable in the public interest, because it will likely be an overall design that keeps within the town's character and improves the property values, encourage development and reuse of existing sites and buildings that are complementary to the surrounding areas.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance and Ms. Behring. Your motion made and properly seconded. Just before we vote, any final comments, if they can be brief?
Ask the developer if you would consent to preserving all the trees east of the town homes on the south, short of what's necessary to clear for stormwater and utilities.
We'd need them to reduce that to writing, if it's intended to be a condition on the rezoning.
Could you do that, Mr. Cumming?
We want to reduce that to writing.
Could you, could you repeat what you said? Mr. Dillinger, I apologize, I didn't fully write it down.
Preserve all the trees east of the, eastern most southern properties. I'm not sure how you would, wherever that, that road line, that imaginary Villa Vista line is, with the exception of what's necessary for stormwater and other utilities. So basically, that triangle that's there. We have, somehow we come back and say we've got to connect Curtis. Well, of course, then we're not.
With that, I call it caveat, I'm not sure if that's the right term, but. Okay, motion's properly before you, so if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed to the motion, would you vote no?
No.
Okay. So, so the matter carries forward. Thank you all for your patience and your time. I believe that's, that's all that needs to be said about that matter at this time. We'll go to item number two on the agenda, the Rand Bryan House lease agreement. Is that from? Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll be super brief. This is presenting to you a resolution to authorize our town manager to negotiate and execute a lease for the continued operation of the Rand Bryan House as a private event and wedding venue. It's a thoughtful, we met with two proposers, and the one that was selected, or that we're recommending, had a very thoughtful plan, a really good grasp of the marketing needed to make the business successful, and also has experience in a similar venue elsewhere. So this resolution would authorize the manager to proceed with the negotiation and execution of a lease.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, you've heard. Questions of her about the resolution? Okay. I think that's consistent with what the council had discussed when we were getting ready to discuss the property, that it would be, we would use it. Okay, no other questions. I'll call for a motion on this resolution.
I move we adopt Resolution 2022-2484.
Hearing none. If you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. No, and there is none. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your patience in waiting here. That covers the main elements of our agenda. We now have committee reports, and I believe Mr. Dillinger, and/or Mr. Vance, Mr. Dillinger, I believe, has a report to make. I'll hear from you, either one of you.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to say that Mr. Dillinger and I met, the HR depart, HR committee met on last week, excuse me, to discuss the vacancies on the boards and the commissions. And we are still going through the process of seeing and filling vacancies that are being projected vacancies. And we, we have received confirmation from three current Planning Commission members who were scheduled to have their, be the end of their first term. Now, now they've been asked if they're willing, they're, they are in a position where they can be reappointed. They were asked if they were available to do so, and they have all agreed to be reappointed, the three individuals. A question becomes, do we want to vote on that tonight, or do we want to wait on that, on, on the vote for those three individuals?
Well, I don't know what your recommendation would be, but I, I would see no reason to delay the vote if these persons are ready and willing to serve. What say you, council?
For the record.
That's a great idea, yeah.
For the record, I'll, I'll make the motion and include their names. Sure. I move that the council approve the reappointment on Planning Commission for Mr. Philip Jefferson, Gina Avant, and Mr. Michael Voiland.
Second. Okay, thank you, motion made and properly seconded. And council, you've heard the committee's justification for this. So if you favor the motion, would you vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, no. Okay. And so, ordered and proved, and they'll be notified, I'm sure, of their expected continued service right. Thank you.
And just to let you know, we will, we will be coming back with more information as we continue to go through the process of due diligence and.
Thank you.
Through the process.
You've been a busy committee. Okay, speaking of committees, we are now down to the section of any other committee reports. You've heard from HR, were there any other committees that met that needs to make a report at this time?
Just a quick update, Mr. Mayor. We've had so much about the wall that heals and what a success it has been. We had our, a dinner on this past Monday night, and Tim updated us on some feedback he had got. And he said Garner just rose to the occasion. He said we had close to 100 tours. They've not had that many tours combined all year to match up to Garner. He said the amount of volunteers was just unprecedented, what had accomplished there, and the fact that the crews are setting up and tearing down was just above and beyond. Everything is great accolades, nothing. Only thing negative, we can, we could come up was, we didn't get a helicopter flyover, but we'll work on the next one for that one. But just as a little sidebar, we had about 125 motorcycles bring it in. My understanding, in Arkansas, they had 35. So once again, Garner rose to the occasion. So to everybody involved, there's a lot of them in this room. Thank you. You made a lot of Vietnam vets happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. And I, yeah, I received a letter either today or yesterday from Mr. Stevens, and basically echoing much of what you said there, and thanking the town for all of its support and volunteers, and the very positive experience for all concerned. So thanks, sir. Okay, committee reports, any others? Hearing none. I'll hear from the manager at this time.
All right, Mr. Mayor, town council, you have the Garner info in the back of your packet. Just a handful of items there, a couple that we need to get some updates on, but we'll be working on those. They just came in, just maybe within the last two, three days. So we'll work on those. And then you have also a, a graph of the current projects, capital project status. So engineer, town engineer Johnson's here. If you have any questions, I don't know if he, he may point a couple out here and there, major projects, but other than that, that's all I have.
Yeah, I was just going to talk about a couple highlights on the list, and I'll be glad to answer any other questions for council. Good evening. Quick update, the Lake Drive widening project is wrapping up, so we are looking to, we've got final plans in hand, and are preparing final bid documents, should have everything in hand in the next week, so we can get prepared for advertising that project to construction. The Joan Sausage Road North Project, as Mr. Hodges mentioned earlier, we have gone through 25% design plans. We've had a few staff reviews of the plans, and we've also submitted them to a couple different divisions within NC DOT. And as soon as we have addressed all of their preliminary comments, then we'll be looking forward to setting up a date for the first public involvement meeting. The Vandora Springs Road Project, currently under construction, we are currently working on the waterline installation. We're kind of in, in this project, we're kind of right, right in the middle of the hardest part, trying to get a lot of the underground infrastructure done. People that are out there are going through the congestion. The contractor's been doing pretty good with the traffic control out there, with the flashing light signal operation going. But once we can get through the waterline installation, which also includes boring underneath the creek, and we will have a temporary road closure, as we have to open cut Vandora to install two storm drainage pipes and that waterline crossing, which will be done over weekends, not during rush hour, weeknight, weekdays. Once we can get through that part of the project and move into storm drainage installation, then we can start getting rid of the large open ditches that run along the road today, and we'll start seeing more physical improvements that you can see on the ground versus just under, underground infrastructure.
That's the project right there, Tiffany Woods, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And then we do have three of our first capital sidewalk projects that were left over, that weren't captured in the 2013 bond. We've, we've got preliminary designs underway on Garner Road sidewalks, Abersboro Road and Bryan Road. And then our surfacing contract is underway. We've completed three streets already, and we're working on concrete and curb ramp installations on multiple streets, with more paving to resume next week. And then just a quick update on some of, some of the NC DOT STIP projects. The US 401 widening project, U 5302, that was pushed back a few more months. The new postponed letting date is December of this year, and this was postponed due to land acquisition issues that they're, they're trying to wrap up. The new Bethel Church Road Bridge Project continues to see slow progress in that completion date. I don't know, I think they revised it to, actually, this has not been updated, because it's showing spring 2022. I need to get a new date in there. I think it's been extended to the end of this year. And then we've got three small spot projects that are, some of the dates on here have just changed since we sent out this report, number 25, 26, and 27. There's one on 1010 Road at Old Stage, one Old Stage Road at Vandora Springs, and then another one at 1010 Road and Fannie Brown. Those are all slated to be advertised or let by DOT between May and July of this year, assuming no further delays. These are small turn lane installations. And then there will be a signal at 1010 and Fannie Brown. And then one, one, the project that has been awarded by DOT is the 28 number, ADA Curb Ramp Upgrades. This is a pretty large-scale project that's going to go through and upgrade a lot of curb ramps around town on NC DOT maintained routes. So this was a project that had, was in the works for, for quite some time, but got put on hold due to the funding issues last year. So it's been, it's been awarded, and they should be starting up on that project, hopefully by June or July. That's all I had for you. If you have any other questions, I'd be glad to.
Okay, yeah. Counsel, any questions for our town engineer? Anybody?
Question? Yes. Mr. Johnson, in reference to the Lake Drive Improvement Project for 25% plans, you said 25%? No, that's for, that's for Joan Sausage Road, excuse me. But for Lake Drive, how close are you to execution for the?
We have final plans. We are waiting final permit approval from NC DOT, but that's really just for the intersection at Highway 50. So everything else is in hand. We're just waiting for them to give us the final bid documents with the bid form, final specifications, and then we'll put it out to advertisement.
You, you may not know this, but for the bridge project on 50, I think it's B 4654, is that, is it scheduled on that? That's in close proximity to Lake Drive?
Currently slated for September letting.
September letting.
So it would probably get underway. A lot of that early work will probably be on the bridge itself. But we're, we're hoping that we'll be mostly done by that point. Our, since we have a fairly small project, we'll, and our work is only at the intersection of 50 that would conflict with anything they're doing, we, we don't foresee any major complications with that.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Okay, anybody else? Question for Mr. Johnson?
Just quick questions. One, on kind of Joan Sausage Road, but then in the.
Just quick questions, one, on kind of Joan Sausage Road, but then it kind of extended to other projects, has there been any revised cost estimates on that project, and then globally, sort of, how frequently are we reassessing the costs of some of these early stage projects?
You did say Joan Sausage, right, yes, we are currently, they're preparing a 25% cost estimate right now, so we will have that in hand to compare to, I guess, the feasibility study, which was the last cost estimate we had, and we will continue to update that typically at 65% plans and 100% plans.
And for the other, earlier in, like, these sidewalk projects and some of the other widening projects, are, are we also doing other sort of guesstimate revisions of, of costs based on what we're seeing, because I know we're seeing it all over, so what's sort of the process for looking at those costs again?
Absolutely, yeah, we, we are, we are actively looking at any cost estimates that come in to account for the major cost escalation we're seeing across the construction industry. So we, we've got our bid tabs from similar projects that we usually utilize, and we're, we're looking to probably up those by 25, 35%, just because of the spike that we're seeing right now. Obviously can't foresee, nobody's got a crystal ball, but we're doing our best to account for those fluctuations.
Those types of readjustments be sort of reflected in the budget that is coming, forthcoming?
Yeah, well, I'll work with, with, with the management team to, to provide as much information as we can on the projects we have.
Thank you.
Mr. Dellinger, to follow into that, one challenge we have with trying to update the CIP is, we're trying to not relive situations that we were in in the 2013 ones, where we, we all got very committed to preliminary engineer estimates for projects, so what you'll see is less numbers of projects listed with definitive numbers in the CIP, and more that are future roadway projects, so that we're not making too much of a commitment of dollars until we're far enough along in the planning process. It's a little bit of a work in progress and a little bit of a shift from what we've presented before, but you, you will see us trying to make those adjustments without committing dollars too far ahead that are too low.
Yeah, and it will have a little less impact on this year's budget, but as far as projecting, projecting out future years in our five-year projections, having those numbers...
It's a little easier, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. It's a little easier right now because the bond dollars, we have all of them to work with, but as we get out to the projects that are not going to get funded in those bonds, it gets especially tricky to try to project that many years out and guessing at dollars.
Okay, yes, Mr. Manager?
I had one more item to mention, we were informed that the earmarks from the, the federal government were going to be available again this next round, and so we put a project together, put our heads together, the management team, and came up and with Maria's help, put in for project some improvements at the senior center, to do a number of things on the inside, primarily, and so just in case you, you get, that comes up in conversation, we did put in for that roughly half a million dollars to do some ADA improvements, some aesthetic improvements, some safety improvements, and some, maybe potentially some kitchen improvements and things like that, so.
Was that the one that came into an announcement with Congresswoman Ross's office?
Correct, yes, it is, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Johnson, one question in curiosity, which is still, is a curiosity question, is the Vandora Springs Garner Road construct grade separation and closed crossing, has anyone ever seen the concept of how they're going to do the grade separation there?
No, we, we have had some recent conversations with NC DOT on that, and I, I, I think that they have also looked at that and had questions on the feasibility of that project.
Curious because it keep, it shows up and we've discussed, jokingly talked about this, is how they're going to do it, so.
Yes, I, I think that, that they, they might have put that in there before looking at really closely, obviously, there's, there's the objective to try to, to close off these at-grade crossings, but that one's going to be very difficult.
Thank you.
That started in the SCIP scoring process prior to Endor West being built, and so you see how the challenge with the lag time that it takes to work all the way through the process can change dramatically the outcome by the time they actually got around to scoring it and getting it into funding.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
Yes, tonight you saw the UDO rewrite, I just wanted to let you know that I was fortunate to have the assistance of a first-year law student from North Carolina Central University, Melissa Bond, who reviewed hundreds of pages of the documents and was a great fresh set of eyes to look at this, she picked up on things that I had missed in my review of this, so I'm just very helped, I was very much helped, and I'm very thankful that there are a number of students out there that are willing to do these kinds of short-term, very mundane, very tedious research projects, so she was one, I had another one help me with a, a research project, and then we will have a summer intern from Campbell Law School, starting on May 16th, who will be here for about 10 weeks this summer on, about 30 hours a week, so I'm, one of my goals was develop an internship program, and I was very pleased that we had 22 applicants from almost all of, all six of the law schools interested in doing a summer internship here with the town of Garner, including students from Elon and Wake Forest, who I had to say, do you know where Garner is? But, you know, so I, I look forward to also having interns for credit basis in the fall and spring semesters as well.
Thank you, I commend you for that, internships are great, I did one in college, not with the attorney's office since I wasn't pursuing that, but anyway, yeah, that, that's great, and thank you for your, your willingness to do that, sure enough. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Mr. Manager, I'll go back to you one more time, your last time.
Yeah, one more time, yep, 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 for the earmark application, that was due on Sunday, which was Easter Sunday, and so I want to commend John Hodges for taking the lead on that and getting that application in on time, and Maria, and, you know, the help in putting that together over the holiday and getting that in on time, so.
We, let's see, maybe, is this new, we got this part of grant, I guess, does Council know, Council know about that, that's just recently been approved, right, or...
We're just putting in the application.
Oh, excuse me, that's the application part, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're in the early stages of putting in the application for the Parks and Rec Trust Fund, for the Yergin property, the planning for that.
I guess I assume that it would be approved, we'll wait and see on that, yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, Council, Council reports, I'll start with Councilmember Behringer.
Yes, sir, two things, the duplex property at the corner of, let's see, it's at the northeast corner of Penny Street and West Garner Road, has a for sale sign up, it also has grass about 18 inches tall, so if we can get that mode, and the intersection with Vandora Springs Road, where you come off of 70 or go from Vandora Springs Road onto 70, the median is broken all to pieces there, on the tip of it, looks really bad, so if we can get that addressed.
Okay, let's see, I'll go to Mr. Dellinger.
Just two things, one, a comment for the gentleman, the gentleman who came in with the light, floodlight issue, I think that would probably be best resolved with an ordinance, we have a noise ordinance, and maybe there's a light flooding ordinance of some sort that we might want to look at. The other is, I'm curious about, I know we talked last council meeting about, we have officer, police officers on Joan Sausage Road directing traffic, I'm curious to know how many hours they spend directing traffic out there, because I'm curious how much it costs us to direct traffic on Joan Sausage Road.
That's the after-hours off-duty work for them, and the company pays for that directly, so that's not...
That wasn't clear.
That's not, yeah, paid by, yeah, so that's just like the officers that work at the movie theater or...
I got you.
You know, other businesses, so.
Well, good for them.
Yeah, we, we have a policy and a process, and we currently even use outside vendor to help schedule those and do a lot of administration for that, so yes.
I guess, just to follow up to that, is sort of, what is, do we know what's causing the, the problem out there, and is it the way it's, is it unexpected volume?
Oh, it's probably just the shift change, the number of vehicles.
Shift change is usually when it is.
The number of, just the number, sheer number of vehicles.
Is that going to be a problem for as long as Amazon is there? Is that kind of what we're saying?
The, I met with some, a resident from Hunter's Mark and the facility manager back, I believe it was in December, and we walked the entire property, they already had plans to have a, an engineer come out early this calendar year, and I haven't heard a report as to what they found, they were going to come out and reassess the traffic, the internal flow within their site, now that they're up and operational, in the meantime, they had started using an exit up, the northern exit that was only planned to be used for holiday traffic, for, for shift changes, for northbound to get to 40, so part of the reason you're seeing that is, is I think that they're using an exit that was not originally planned to be used, so I haven't heard back from the, the site manager as to any changes they were going to make, but they had, they had identified the need, and they had folks that were taking a look at it from a professional design standpoint. I'll, I'll ask for an update on that.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, okay, Mr. Singleton, nothing, okay, and Mr. Matthews? Okay, just a couple things, obviously, I was out of town for the, let's see, the extravaganza, I heard good reports on that, I wasn't here to observe that myself, but I guess that's confirmed all the way around, good, good, good experience and well attended, I understand, maybe. And my, and I'll be very brief, my only commentary for tonight is, you mentioned some broken roadways here, I believe, or something, I, I just, I just rode Colorado back, and while I'm not an expert, we have some bad problems on our interstate system, 40 and 70 and all the interstates that travel on, one thing I think our president's right about, I think he said that, you know, we got a crumbling infrastructure, and certainly, if you, if you drive on it much, you'll, you'll, you'll tend to agree, but at any rate, it's a, it's a major problem that hopefully our country is going to try to deal with, and we'll deal with it here as much as we can, I know. Okay, that's it, I believe, unless there's anything else for the good of the cause, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I'm sorry?
We don't, we don't need it, it was just there, just in case we need to continue.
Right, okay, sorry, observe it, yeah, we don't need that, so.
If you want one.
Yeah, did I hear you say you, you made, you made the motion for adjournment, Ms. Behringer?
I moved.
Okay, all right, moved and properly seconded, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And it is unanimous, I believe, so, thank you, Council, for your good work tonight, and be careful going home.